We're called meeting to order and any changes to the agenda? We have a second. Second, all those in favor?
All right.
Do you unanimous? Okay. Um, motion carried. For the minutes from January sixteen.
I read through them. I don't see anything out of orders, so I make a motion to approve.
Okay, oh, the one I forgot.
Did you see? I've never know about.
It did say that it was Paul Steen, Iowa, what that needs to make a difference or not.
Which was it?
Rolling hills is whole. There was anything over where it was at, Paul Steen.
Oh.
I don't know if that really, you better not. Okay. All right, we have a second on the minutes.
I will say again.
Yeah, all those in favor?
All right.
Okay, proof please.
I got the three hundred and two thousand, two hundred and eighty-two dollars and eleven cents. It's three zero two, two eight two, point one one. And drainage of four thousand, four hundred and sixty-two point forty-eight cents, four four six two point fourteen.
That's what I had. I just looked at. I had a second.
All right, we have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
All right.
Okay. unanimous motion carries. All right. All right. Is Alyssa coming? Oh, wait, whoops. Public concern. Sorry, is there any public concerns? No, no one on Zoom? Okay, no public concerns when you run. It's Alyssa gonna be here. No, okay. Go ahead. Come on up, Cheryl.
Morning, Cheryl.
Good morning.
Good morning, and on behalf of Humboldt County Housing, thank you. The success of Humboldt County Housing Development can be attributed to the financial support of both the city of Humboldt and Humboldt County, along with the hard work of the volunteers of Humboldt County Housing. The current members include Clifton Calafatic, Dave Dodgen, Boot Varon Coon, Amy Donahue, Dave Lee, Alyssa O'Connor, Rick Peterson, myself, Donnell Scow, and Kurt Littlesey. To assist Humboldt County Housing, which is a nonprofit organization, they have received funds annually from Humboldt County and the city of Humboldt. Since Humboldt County Housing utilizes no full-time staff, these funds are used to conduct engineering studies, provide matching funds for state and federal grants, and low-interest loan programs, pay for professional services, and conduct county housing needs. Humboldt County had the foresight to address the lack of housing for our county as far back as nineteen ninety-seven. They saw the need to assist in forming Humboldt County Housing in the fall of nineteen ninety-seven. It's been a while. Projects that have been developed or received assistance from Humboldt County Housing are the Ivy Apartments in nineteen ninety-nine. In August of two thousand seventeen, Single Family Lots in Riverview Heights Third Edition was done. A partnership in creating an extension of water and sewer mains to Riverview Heights Third Edition to make Willow Ridge Edition feasible. This created twenty lots for both single and multifamily housing. Assistance in converting Fourteenth Avenue Southwest and Pioneer Drive into a paved street with curb and gutter, and that also created three single-family lots in two thousand and three. Facilitated that L-HAP grant for remodeling the Scandinav Navy Building and which created eight rental units. Continual financial support for the Building Trades Program. The success of this program is based on the partnership between Humboldt Community School District, Iowa Central Community College, Humboldt County Housing, and local businesses. This program started in nineteen ninety-nine, and today the students are constructing the Twenty-First Project. Many of the past students are currently working in the area of, as contractors, electricians, plumbers, et cetera. Humboldt County Housing purchases lots for the home and applies for the financing. All profits and losses are absorbed into their program funds. And let's see, nineteen nine, or two thousand and nineteen to two thousand and twenty, the county and Building Trades Program built two cabins out at Sheldon Park, and those have been a very, very successful project. Assistance with application and administration of the CDBG Grant for Housing Rehabilitation, and that's a program that's no longer offered. Riverview Heights Fifth Edition provided fifteen lots to single-family housing in May of two thousand and seven. The development of Viggle Ridge, which began in two thousand and twelve, Humboldt County Housing purchased seventy-one, seventy-one acres, and Phase One had twenty-three lots, and Phase Two had twenty lots, of which eight lots are still available. Lot ten was sold to the county for future green space, and Lot twenty was donated to the city for a park. In the spring of twenty sixteen, the extension of Viggle Ridge Drive assisted in a private development of which four homes have been constructed there. In two thousand and thirteen, a demo grant program was established. Qualified homeowners could receive up to seventy-five hundred dollars to demolish an unsightly property in Humboldt County. The only stipulation was that a single-family housing residents had to be rebuilt on the property. A housing needs assessment was last conducted in two thousand and thirteen. An opportunity arose to purchase an unsightly dilapidated mobile home park in the south part of Humboldt. It converted that into eight moderate-priced homes. The lot sold for a dollar. And to any person or contractor, the only stipulation was that they had to start construction within thirty days and sell a home for a purchase price of under two hundred thousand. In two thousand and eighteen, Humboldt County Housing purchased fourteen lots in West River Drive, and discussion continues on that as to how that property will be developed. In two thousand and nineteen and two thousand and twenty, Humboldt County Housing analyzed a variety of options to expand the housing stock in Humboldt County, including rural housing three sixty, LMI renovations, soyland homes, development of Riverview property for workforce housing with Paulson Group and modifications to the Building Trades projects. In two thousand and twenty-one, Humboldt County contracted with soyland to construct two single-family homes on two infolots as an immediate solution, excuse me, to the workforce housing. These homes have been completed. They're owned by legacy homes, and they're still for sale. In two thousand and twenty-two, Humboldt County Housing purchased a dilapidated home for the renovation of Building Trades, and that was funded by the demolition grant program. It's coordinated the Humboldt County Conservation for construction of a shelter at Sheldon Park that will be Building Trades Twenty-two Project, and is discussing potential options for nine oh one Taft Street Lot, which is across from Hy-Vee. In summary, Humboldt County Housing has been very proactive in addressing the housing needs of Humboldt County, which is absolutely vital for growth and economic success. Humboldt County Housing respectfully requests seventy-five hundred in the annual support for two thousand and twenty-three. Questions?
So helping Gilmore City and
Livermore.
Livermore.
Yep. Those communities are going to be constructing a home in each community of the homes built by the prisoners in Newton, so those homes should be completed, I would say, by fall of this year.
Should they housing them like either or taking them back?
No, the, the homes are actually built at the Newton Correctional Facility.
Always like a lodge.
And then they transport them to the site.
Okay.
And there's one in Livermore, and then Gilmore City.
Correct. Yes.
Yeah.
Cheryl, is it seven five hundred the same as last year?
Correct. It's been our request since nineteen seventy-seven. If you want to increase that with the cost of everything, we certainly would embrace that with open arms.
Well, we're down to our last final cabinet full of money, so.
I can bring another one.
Full of money?
Yep.
I didn't really do that. I mean, that's a lot of.
Yes, we have. Yes, we have.
Really good.
And Humboldt County has been kind of the mirror for other communities because so many of them, other counties do not have an actual housing group, and to facilitate any of these things, you need that for a group to make things happen.
Well, it's interesting when you go around to other towns, you know, you go through and see these, like, badger that over on the east side of town, that group of row homes that have built up and and we have some of those same developments and how it attracts hopefully, couples that are looking and helps our businesses and helps her everything, so we appreciate all of your work.
Thank you.
On board.
Thank you.
So we'll do what we can.
Yeah, we'll take it under advisement.
All right.
Thank you. Yes, yeah, thanks for coming.
Thank you.
All right.
So your buddy, Dave.
No, it's nine fifteen, so we'll just go down. Yeah. So the next thing on is proof for filing and publication of the twenty-twenty-two salary for Iowa code section three, four, nine point one eight, parentheses B.
I made motion. Unless there's something that we need to change.
Yeah, I take it you double-checked everything. Okay.
Make motion to accept the salary twenty-two, twenty twenty-two salary report.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
All right.
Okay, unanimous, the motion carries. All right. Well, I guess we're gonna get right into it, huh? Discussion, action on the compensation board, wage recommendations for twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four year.
Well, if Rick is on his way.
I know, I don't wanna.
I would rather table that for a few more minutes until he gets here, so that
There, okay, I'm good with that. All right.
Go back through it, why we did something, or why we considered something.
Okay, that's good thought. Okay. Accept letter from the food pantry requesting funding for twenty-three, twenty-four year.
I have a copy.
Is that Humboldt Ministerial?
Yeah. They sent me the email and
Yep. Was that that one that was, there was like, we all get that letter, I think?
I don't know. He sent it to all of us or not? I'm on the board, so he sent it to me. I forwarded it to Trish, because my printer is.
When did you, when did you do that?
See, the last night or this morning.
Because I didn't have anything.
All right, well, I have a copy of it here, and the they basically go through the same thing. I can read the whole spew to you, or I can get to the bottom part, or it says Humboldt Ministerial Association Building at four nineteen Sumner, newly renovated. Offices has served one-stop location for people to donate money, resources, and and food. The building also serves UDMO, who was upstairs in our courthouse. They oversee the, the running of it. And finally, serves as the food dis- depository for the food bank. It's where the volunteers help provide food for the insecure in our county. We, at the food pantry, have been seen a boom in, in business. With that, they're requesting ten thousand dollars. And I guess we had figured out what last year been when we, what our electricity would be costing and we could save us about five hundred dollars a month not having entry there. Not having all of their electric things, their freezers and, and refrigerators running. Plus, it frees up a build, one of our rooms that we changed over to a office or meeting space, so they are requesting a ten thousand dollars. I think in the past, we've, didn't we give them maybe five thousand? That's for no.
Yeah. We gave them ten thousand and passed. I want ten thousand five hundred this year.
This is, this is UDMO. This is. UDMO runs the food pantry, but
Okay.
So they're the next request. So I just told them I would bring the, the request, being that it was gonna be here. And we'll get a copy of it, so we have a paper copy of it. And I told them the same thing. We'd take it under advisement and see where we can get with our.
Just write down what they're asking.
Right, so ten thousand dollars is what they're requesting.
All right. Hey, the next thing, UDMO, okay, UDMO annual report and funding requests.
You know, it wasn't a couple weeks ago when Julie was here, didn't she formally make that request of this?
I thought she did, yeah. I don't know, she had. Did she have this paper?
I don't think she gave us this paper, but I think she said that we would be requesting basically the same thing, if I remember right.
Yep.
But this copy, and I'm on that board as well, not that I'm trying to take this somebody's job away from them, but four thousand and ninety-nine individuals, sixteen hundred and seventy-nine households. And seeing that the number that they have here is four hundred and fifty-six thousand, four hundred and fifty dollars and thirty-nine dollars in total cost, that also includes the, I, or the the energy health for people with live heat, live water, all of the things that they can go down and see them down at UDMO office and get help if they're running behind.
They still do resistance?
So a lot of different things that they are involved in. And we also partnered with them to run our food can, so they run food pantries in a lot of different counties. So they're doing a good job in our, on the county as well. That would be ten thousand five hundred is what they're requesting, the way it looks.
Yep, it is.
Take it under advisement.
Yep. Okay. Well, should we be coming with?
You can do that.
Say, Dave.
Humboldt County Housing Meeting on Wednesday eighteenth. And that looks like the only one I had official. All right, on Tuesday the seventeenth, invited to the Humboldt County Firemen's Association met at Spalley's, and actually Sandy and I went there for their invitation. It was just an informational meeting in regards to the fire departments potentially moving some of their boundaries. So it was a very interesting informational meeting. That was at six on Tuesday. On Wednesday the eighteenth, we had Emergency Management Association full board meeting for budget discussion. And right after that, we have the nine-one-one full board meeting, budget discussion, both of those, EMA and nine-one-one back-to-back on Wednesday evening, and that went very well. And that was my two official that we last week.
All right, on Monday, I stuck around or came back, I guess, after the, our meeting here, when I listened to the compensation boards. Conversations back and forth. I guess I'm, here it'll all come up here soon. My Tuesday, I had UDMO financial meeting. That was a Zoom or conference call, excuse me, it wasn't Zoom. So we had that meeting Tuesday. We're going over committee reports if you had to, and then you listen to.
Hey, Rick, do you have any? Do you have any? Okay. All right, on the sixteenth, I also attended the Compensation Board. The seventeenth, we had Kitty Cat Day Care meeting. And then I also went to the Firemen's Association. On the eighteenth and nineteenth, I was down in Des Moines for the ISAC elected officials training. On the twentieth, we had, I had a, these are all IW, Iowa Workforce Development Meetings. We attended Northwest and North Central Group attended the Western Iowa CEOs meeting. They are thinking of not signing their twenty-eight E and letting it go back to state. So we wanted to attend that meeting via Zoom to see what they were thinking, why they cut that, was, uh, and, yeah, so then that was interesting. No, they have decided not to do it. We have Northwest and North Central have not decided to do anything yet. We're actually having a meeting today with everybody. We also had a Zoom meeting with IWD State and the Department of Labor, and that's what they were kind of going over, is what our options were for the subrecipient. What do you do if you do cancel your twenty-eight E and it goes back to the state? I'm not. I have a lot of mixed emotions on that. I mean, the state keeps changing what they want us to do. I mean, every time we get everything about ready, we think for Iowa workforce, they go and they change it. But yet, we don't want to lose local control either. Uh, you know, where that funding is, who's, who's doing it? And that would probably happen if it did go back to the state, so we're meeting today with Northwest CEOs and North Centrals. Everybody in North Central is gonna be here, so that we can all be in the room together and talk. So it was a pretty full day, plus I got probably ten phone calls after that to talking with different people, so pretty much all day Friday was Iowa Workforce Development. And that's all I had.
All right. We skipped the Compensation Board.
So. Okay.
You guys put that on hold before you go.
The full thing. I copied the wrong thing. I thought I came in here and copied it. Copy the last year's, not this year's, or I couldn't get anything to copy at home. I emailed. I had Sean email everybody. Did everybody get a chance to kind of review?
Yeah. Yeah, I went through it.
Their recommendations were seventeen and twelve. Was that what I reviewed correctly?
I wanted to add the action thirteen.
Thirteen?
Yeah, it was seventeen. Yeah.
And if I remember the conversation, cost of living was roughly eight point
Seven.
Some, seven percent was what they had tossed out and using that as the cost of living plus an increase in wages was and they used our figures from last year of cutting their recommendation in half. I guess I was unaware if we could talk at the meeting, so I didn't want to get in trouble by asking, you know, the recommendations come from them. We appreciate their work. But by the same token, we're the same ones that have to get elected or run for election and try to keep our levy in a manageable position in order to keep everybody's taxes somewhat.
Where are half to the cost of living index? That's eight point something. Why do they want to go over that every year? They always double it, it seems like. It's crazy. You know, these little counties, we can't afford that.
Well, that was the one question I wanted to ask, was when you're dealing with Pope County or, or Story, or some of places that have a lot more people that you're spreading that cost over a bigger base as opposed to a smaller group of people, those numbers so I guess I'm, I'm, I'm don't know how we're gonna make seventeen thirteen work. That's my opinion.
I talked to several people down at the meeting in Des Moines. Most of them were doing wage increases from anywhere from they've six to eight. Some were going over. There was one comment that their share was extremely low on the thing, and they went, I'm trying to remember what they said, but it, it was like in the teens to do that. So I think with the, the meeting, at the meeting, to get the average wage for the sheriff, it would be eight point seven, and then for the medium, it would be six point four three, to get him. That was on the sheet right here. So, and that was to go with the salaries for the size of police chiefs for our town, or for our county, the ten thousand, we're almost at ten thousand, we're at nine thousand six hundred and, and that basically ninety-seven hundred. So that's how they came up with that for the sheriff, and then plus they wanted to do the cost of living. So that's how they came up with that seventeen percent.
And correct me if I'm wrong, in like Wright County, last year, they did a huge jump for their sheriff, and then this year, it's like two percent. So
Yes.
when you average the two together, you're looking at eight, seven, eight percent over two years that had done the same thing as opposed to, wasn't it fifteen, fourteen or fifteen last year and two percent this year?
It was twenty-three last year.
It was twenty-three last year.
I mean, I, I asked one of their supervisors, they said, how did you guys keep that on your levy under? And he says, well, it wasn't as big as you thought. Okay. That was the comment, which just wasn't, we thought, well, one would have thought, so. I'll show you guys when talk, ask questions.
So are you blowing on this today, the percentage you're just talking? So are you blowing on this today than the percentage you're just talking, or just?
We don't want to push it too far down the road because.
Hold on, I think that's the other side of the coin. I don't want to make anybody on the Compensation Board feel like we don't appreciate what they're doing. Because we all appreciate their their work, they're coming up here, because I don't think that the pay is. Huge for the time that they put in and then the grief that they get. Stuck with when they do what they're asked to do. So I don't want anybody to think we don't appreciate it, but I think that for us, we get to live both sides of it.
Right. It ultimately falls on us for what we're gonna do.
Well, with everybody wanting to raises. And these kind of raises that you're talking about there, you might as well raise your taxes because they're coming up. There ain't no way you can run a budget like we did last year. We cut. This year we'll have to cut it again in order to make. Otherwise, it's going to hit everybody in the county's pocketbook.
And every one of the, every one of the requests that have come in have been, can you increase? Can we, well, we'd take more if we can.
Every one of them, so.
Plus the. Cost of living for all of us is one of two. I mean, we're damned if we do and damned if we don't.
It's going to hit the pocketbook, it's going to hit it hard if we. I think that the Compensation Board's got a big. Replied the responsibility to do that, but. I think they need to look a little closer to the. Index, cost of living index, both of them. Let's see where they're at. I'm not for raising everybody's wages right now. I said my piece.
When you say at all, are you talking, or are you just?
Well, you can raise a little bit, raise them by the index, don't raise them up there twice as much. And that's crazy.
Sandy, what was those numbers you? What else from some of your research?
For the sheriff?
Something in the.
Right. Yeah, it was six.
Eight point three was the index, I think.
Eight point seven, eight point seven is the cost of of. The colo for what social security comes up with, it's, it was eight point seven.
And that's a national average, right?
That is a national, correct. And like I said, down at. The ISAC meeting, a lot of them working on, we're giving six to eight. Six for the elected officials, eight for the for the sheriff.
Just funny, because I got my Iowa State Sheriff's Deputy Association. It shows some of the sheriffs are getting, I mean, about a few of them are getting above ten percent.
Well, I did say that there was a few of them having their sheriffs were a lot lower and they were in the teams. I did say that, but there was only. Yeah, I mean, I talked to a lot of counties. I didn't talk to all of them, you know, and I'm trying to remember what. Was it Lee County, I think? Isn't it a smaller county down? See, I didn't talk, nobody from Emmett was there, so I didn't talk to anybody from there. But. Yeah.
I think Lee was was higher across the department, from the engineer side of things, like they were low with everyone.
Right, that county has not kept up with, and it's and it's caught up with them because. They're having a really hard time getting out, you know, getting people to run, getting people to. Yeah. Okay, so I'm just doing some figures here. We, last year, we 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 cut it by thirty three percent, wasn't it?
I think that's what.
Yeah, okay, so I half would be, of course, six point seven five for elected officials, eight point five for the sheriff. So seventeen.
So you have a question with health insurance. You need to be, you have to be a employee or an elected official to get thirty hours a week to be able to have health insurance, is that correct? I got some figures here that I.
Yeah, kids are right on top of that. Okay, so if we did what we did last year, it's thirty three percent. That would make. Okay, if we did thirty three percent like we did last year, that would be elected officials at eight point seven one. And the sheriff would be at eleven point three nine if we did thirty three percent. That's what we cut it by last year.
Now, when you're talking cut, you're talking cutting the recommendation of the compensation.
That's what I'm talking about.
Yeah, I just want to make sure.
You're good, you're good. Yep, yep. Fifty percent. For elected officials would be six point seven five and the sheriff would be eight point five oh.
I don't know if we want to. Thirty three percent? Well, I should be writing this stuff.
I wrote it.
Okay, thirty point one.
That's at thirty three.
No, thirty three would be eight point seven one for elected officials.
Okay.
And the sheriff would be eleven point three nine. Read it again, just to make sure. Yeah, eleven point three nine. And this year, the Compensation Board did make the comment that they kept. The two a little closer, just so that if there was a cut, there wouldn't be as big a cut like there would be last, like last year.
And when they started talking, they wanted to make sure that we were all aware that the eight point seven was the cost of living.
Cost of.
And trying to combine the two, and that's where you got the numbers.
Right.
The way I heard it, but I wasn't at the first meeting, so I. I just listened to the one Monday.
Right.
But that was the.
I was at the first meeting, they really didn't give any.
Well, I don't think they really had those numbers.
No.
To put together, but.
They were gonna do research. I don't know if anybody, does anybody want to look at this today?
Sure.
Because last year they did eighteen and six, so that's why this year they did the seventeen and thirteen. If we did do the thirty three percent, that would be. At least colo for that elected officials and a little bit more. For the sheriff.
Obviously.
So thirty three percent, Sandy, read your numbers, it was eleven point three nine.
For the sheriff.
Yeah.
Eight point seven one for all of their elected officials.
Well, honestly, given Bruce's better explanation about being on both sides.
I don't know about my better explanation, don't put my name on that.
Well, I'm just, it's founding on the fact that we have to look at the. Overall, this is a big chunk of money that keep our budget in check. I don't think thirty three percent or three three point three is enough of a cut. I would suspect going a little bit higher than that, given all of the.
I'm doing.
Information that we've looked at. Because you can look at the national average, that's an average is an average. We're in Humboldt County, Iowa. Not in New York City, thank God. But I just think that we have to take. Role as supervisor, which a big part of that role is to keep the budget in check and taxes in check. That's, this comes in front of us and sometimes you got to make the tougher decisions and still try to maintain a amount of fairness to everyone.
Well, there's so much that we don't have any control over. Every time, and Benham just using here as an example, because. And Dean could probably be the same. Every time somebody comes in here with a new squad car, a new. Motor patrol, a dump truck, all we hear is it went up. Two hundred thousand, a rock went up a buck and a half a ton, times however many tons we buy. That just comes out of our budget and, you know, we're still trying to funnel the same. We don't get to go up to Algonia, Sioux County and pull bottom tier off there to help support our. Rock or, you know, whatever, buying motor control or police vehicle. Putting boiler in courthouse or whatever it is, I'm just.
Which we are having boiler issues, so we don't know if that's what we're gonna bring up to be. I did do forty percent cut. That would be elected officials. At seven point eight and the sheriff would be at ten point two. That's forty percent. Calculator.
Yeah, you didn't, you weren't bucking to become a CPA?
No.
Okay.
Down at my grandson who's in kindergarten, he's do already doing long division. He was talking about pie and he says, Grandma, if you do, and I'm like. Honey, I was never a math whiz, that's why I have a calculator.
Just in kindergarten.
Kindergarten, I know.
Until he's in seventh grade.
Of course, Michael had a math that was natural.
Well, I know. Last year, some elected officials got shorted, so.
Right, yeah. I would agree.
We're the Compensation Board, folks, to do their job, but. And we appreciate all they do, but. I still say we're gonna have to cut it somewhere. We'll go forty percent or whatever.
But, okay, so I was asking Trish, there is this, this one here. This is what we got so far, and I thought Shawna was going to kind of track that. I don't know if I've missed it on one of them, but. These were twenty three, twenty four recommendations. Story was. They did, there's a little different. They did their auditor at fourteen, recorder treasurer at seven. Attorney, board supervisors and sheriff at seven. To book, you know, you're talking much bigger counties than what we are. Eight for recorder and sheriff, seven percent for auditor, attorney, treasurer, board supervisors.
You can't pick and choose the Compensation Board, Ken, so.
We take this recommendation, vote of Iowa states that we can be reduced by the board of supervisors, equal percentage for all offices.
I just didn't hear.
And I was surprised, there was a lot of them down at the meeting that that's how their comp board did it this time. They. But they are the ones that set it for those individual different ones. We can't do that. They can.
Historically speaking, Sandy, you had these numbers too. What did the across the board increase end up being last year, four point something percent, what point two?
Four point two for all elected officials and twelve point oh six for the sheriff.
Okay.
And I just found right on here, right, did twenty two point five last year. And this year, they're, the recommendation was three percent, but I think you're right, I think they were. They could have cut it down to two, because I talked to a couple of them down there that was there. I don't know where Shelby County is, honestly, sixteen percent, pardon?
Arlen.
Arlen, oh, okay, okay, thanks. That was sixteen percent. For sheriff, seven point five for all others. Hancock did seven percent, that's.
They raised last year too, the sheriff did, you know.
Their sheriff got fifteen point three seven, all others were five. It says here fifteen point three seven. Pardon?
I think he had twenty seven percent.
Well, this is what was recorded. Montgomery was fifteen percent, all others were twelve. So, I mean, it's, it's, it's pretty much all over the board. Franklin actually just did dollar amounts, it looks like. Straight dollar amounts, no percentage, yeah.
Yeah, I suppose they can do that. They can probably do whatever they want.
Right. And that was talked about at the meeting too, down there.
Very per office, that way, but whatever.
No, go ahead, if you had something. I just thought, do we want to take this under advisement, kick it around? I mean, we've got a lot of good information. We have to make our own decisions.
And we're trying to set budgets, so we need to know.
Right.
What percentage.
And I mean, this is all great information, thanks particularly to Sandy for. Making sure we have it and looking through it and presenting it. Every county is a little bit different. Heard a discussion of everybody, you know, we have to deal with the fact that, you know, we don't have an unlimited amount of money. And we'll try to keep it in check. Having said all that. Yeah, I'm gonna make a motion. That. Given the powers of the board of supervisors, what we can do, that we reduce the Compensation Board's recommendation by fifty percent. And given the fact that we can treat ourselves differently. That would put my rough math at six and a half percent, which is far away above last year's for everyone. And that would, I would reduce board supervisors to an even six percent. Put our money where our mouth is, using the code of Iowa. So that we are trying to save some money, but we're trying to be fair. Recommend the fifty percent across the board cut for the recommended increase from the Compensation Board. I would place the board of supervisors to increase at an even six. That's my motion.
Okay, so you're saying, your motion is fifty percent across the board, so that'd be six point seven five. For the attorney, the auditor, reporter, treasurer. And then eight point five oh. I wrote it down wrong.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I wrote it down wrong, six, six point five oh. Okay, and the sheriff would be at eight point five and supervisors at six percent.
Even six, yes, that's my motion.
You repeated it and you caught it the first time. Okay, so there is second. So that motion would die, that motion dies. Okay. So what's, what's our move?
I'm almost cut this, cut the Compensation Board by thirty percent. And back the supervisors down to an even five.
Okay, I had.
And I think you gave us those numbers before, so I think that puts the elected officials at eight point seven one. And the sheriff at eleven point three two, would be the supervisors at five. I think that gets our elected officials to last year's. For, for that six percent for the last two years, which might keep up a little better with inflation rates than that. That's my opinion. So that was my motion.
Okay, that was thirty three percent, not.
Is that what that was?
Yeah, I just, I just didn't want to, yeah.
Oh, I thought you said it was thirty.
We cut it last, what, that's what we did last year was thirty three percent. So the thirty three.
What numbers did you give me?
You got the numbers right, it's a percentage that wasn't right.
Oh, it's a thirty three percent.
Thirty three percent. Okay, well, I just want, that's why I want to make sure. I didn't know if you wanted me to refigure the math.
No, no, and I was going by your numbers, I'm just, I didn't hear.
You said eleven, three, two, and that's what I wrote down, but down here and my other chicken scratch, I had eleven, three, nine.
Thirty three percent. Did you check my math?
Eight point seven one, it's a thirty-three percent reduction.
Okay. Okay.
Okay, and then five percent for supervisors.
And five percent for supervisors.
Also, I can break this motion. So we can discuss it.
Yeah, we have a motion in a second.
I would say that I understand where Rex coming from, but I mean, at that three percent reduction. I'd still be more agreeable to supervisors is only more than six from that still a big cut from the thirty-three percent for everybody else. I mean, I know everybody's trying to be fair, which side of fairness do you play on, I mean, I've looked at the big picture. It's, yeah, I understand all of that, but. It's closer. Thirty-three percent. And you know, all good information, all good discussion, I'll disagree with any other, but trying to look at both sides where we shake out our money situation.
Not to step on the compensation board toes, but I would go along with Rick's moment.
Is there any other discussion? Okay, the motion is to cut it by thirty-three percent. For all elected officials, that would be eight point seven one percent increase. For the sheriff, cut by thirty-three percent, that would be eleven point three nine percent and five percent for the supervisors. All in favor?
Aye, aye. Aye.
Opposed, okay, so we've got one opposed and three ayes, so the motion does carry.
I didn't sleep at all, I assume, so.
Okay. All right, and I don't see unless they're out, they might be out in the hall. Could you please?
If we have these two. According to their number, we've only made four thousand dollars. Morning Dean.
Morning.
Is that gonna join Dean up there?
Yeah. I cannot, it's like hot seat though.
Good morning. What do you have for us? Pardon?
What do you mean?
It says here, discussion funding request for veterans memorial.
And we'll start with that.
Oh, we're gonna start with this. He want to pass those around. What this is, is a picture, we're trying to do a veterans memorial on the corner of where they can park. I hope you guys don't know where that's at. Cross my saviors, we're, there's an eighty-foot flag pole there.
There's a big sign.
And there's a sign there now.
Will be in the southwest.
Southwest corner, yeah. Um, this, we went uh with Clayton Borland from the city. They really, that's the corner he picked, he wanted that one. And he has laid out on the second page. He wanted an eight foot around the street side. So the eight foot is on the street and he wanted six feet along the grass side. Did not wanna blow snow on the memorial and chemicals and did not wanna blow grass on. And in the middle of that, after the four by forty-nine, there's a little dot there, that's that eighty-foot flag pole. Uh, it was the tallest flag pole in Iowa for two months. The uh rotary, you are the. Junior Rotary, whatever it was, they dodged and a few other ones with that flag pole. They have a lot of trouble getting the flags up and down, takes two people and I, I, we don't own it. We don't wanna do it, they're gonna take care of the flags. What has been suggested is we put a USA flag pole, state flag pole, unknown soldier flag pole. Then there was talk about putting ten flag poles along the back of each side. So that if we wanna have memorial services or we wanna have, it would be a place, it's so unique because it's right on the highway. You can't miss it, and that's, we're talking, they're talking lights with the city. The city parks department has been fantastic to deal with on this. On the last one, the last page there is, we're verifying all the veterans, there's been instances where these people put these six-foot rocks up. And they engraved their names on. They, one of our county towns has an instance where the sister of one of the names. Went in and just been raking the guys across the coals because he got dishonorably discharged. We don't wanna do that, so we're verifying them ahead of time, DD two fourteen, cross out what you don't want us to have. But what I wanted to really show you is you can even pass this around if you want. We're gonna do, we're gonna have three types of stones. These, this one is mine. I paid for it and what we have, we got a really good price from Mike Ewing over at Clary. I like to buy locally, but, you know, these are twenty-six dollars a piece. We're figuring that we need about fifteen hundred of them to cover the vets, we're guessing.
Those stones are granite, they're very heavy.
These are granite, it's, this, this sandblasting was done by a guy that up in Saint Joe. Um, Mike Ewing, to do that same thing, wanted a hundred dollars a stone. And he's less than ten, so we saved, or fifteen hundred, we saved a hundred and forty thousand dollars at least. And this is, this is what we've been going after, is trying to get the price of this down so that we can deal with it. Um, Jason Dodd's gonna go in, looking at this front picture again. He's gonna go in and cut this all out, bring it to grade. He's gonna pour the cement five inches thick with rerod in it. He's gonna pour a four foot to the flagpole. He's gonna stain it and he's gonna make it a slate color on the top, so it's all gonna be slate all the way around. Then in the middle, Jason Dodd's gonna come in and he's gonna pack it with sand. And we have to cut stones because it's at an angle. We have to cut stones and he's gonna do that, the, you can see inside of the. Inside of the cement, there's a different color there, those are the veteran stones. The lighter color is just a lighter stone. And they, what they do is they send it through a heater, they burn the outside so that it's rough and you turn that upside down. You could actually pull that stone out and turn it over and engrave it, and you could use it if you wanted to.
Otherwise, it'd be a walking stone.
It'll be walking, it'll be pathways, so you're not walking on the veteran stones, you're walking on these pathways in between. Being we don't know the amount, now Dean's got names clear back to Revolutionary War. From Humboldt County, you're, you would be amazed, I went online. And I had, I had sixty to seventy killed in action from Humboldt County. Now, what we're doing for them is we're doing an eight by eight, that's a dark color. And engraving their name and when they got killed. And I was shocked that I could get that many names online. And the problem, we would like to have verification and we'd like to have permission to cut a stone with their name in it. But how do you find the family from that far back? So in essence, we're gonna have to just take a stab at it. But there's nobody to pay for these, so this is what we're looking for, is some help to be able to. You know, get this all going. Um, the first, I've got a computer program, I do a lot of computer. I got a computer program and I input the first sixty-eight names I got. And I had two hundred and ninety-six years of service out of Humboldt County, out of sixty-eight names. Our biggest problem is getting people to fill out this form. And if you know anything about the service at all. The young veterans do not wanna talk about it. And they're serious, they didn't wanna talk about it. You almost gotta break their arm to get them to do this. I got a call from a wife of a, now he's deceased now. She couldn't get the form to write, so she wants to stop and do that, we're getting a lot of that. And the names are coming, but it's really slow, it's, it's just really slow. Where we have enough money already to put the cement in. We can clean that out, we can put the cement in, parks department's gonna put the landscaping around the outside. That's, once the cement is done, then Jason's just gotta go in and finish that. It, it's a, it's a heck of a project.
We hope that'll happen in April.
Yeah, we would like to get that cement in there in April, we think that'll bring some things to life.
How much is that then, the cement that you already have the money for?
It's around twenty-six thousand dollars.
That's what the land, the landscaping, cutting the.
Cutting everything out, packing the bottom, we had somebody bring out that we didn't do curb cuts for wheelchairs. We didn't get the flags all planned in there. We don't have any statues, uh, the Lions Club said they would give us a bench for this. Um, we've applied for the grant through the city, to the county of Humboldt. And uh, we're hoping we get some more there, but if we can, I think if we can get the cement poured and everything. I think it'll take off, it's in a perfect location, it is just. We couldn't have asked for more cooperation from the city and the city parks department. That, that Clayton Borland is absolutely awesome.
So everything on here, we could, all this stuff could be added, it doesn't, it isn't like it has to be.
Yes, it's right, does not have to be done.
Talking to statues, the benches, the whatever.
Yeah.
You can all add, add some of this.
All, all added later, we've got the flagpole in there. Mike Ewing has already told us he's gonna buy that entrance, that block entrance, he's giving that to us. Wow, he's making, you know, thousand of, of these, the larger ones are sixty-three dollars. There's forty-seven hundred and fifty bricks in this whole.
Yes, I was gonna ask you.
Forty-seven hundred and fifty bricks, so it's gonna take some time.
Yeah.
And.
And there'll be a lot of vacant.
Right, and that's, that's our idea, is we're gonna lay this, because with, with these bricks, we can take these back out.
Take them out.
Right, we can get them all taken care of later. As we get more veterans in Humboldt County, we're not, we're not throwing them out, they're all.
After they see it, they may not have filled the application out early and after they see it, it's like, oh, I have my parents' name in there.
Um, we were copy, we copied a little, I'm from up in north of Algonia. We copied Widomarsh, this is what, in a small scale, this is what there is, they use these same bricks, but they didn't sandblast them. They edged them, and this should last longer than. Well, it's better than a, better than a cemetery. So according to Ewing, I'll be dead and gone by a long time. And this will still be okay, but they take and they take a power washer and they wash it in the spring and clean the dirt out of the spots. We're not discriminating against anybody from Humboldt County. If you're in the Air National Guard, you're in the National Guard, you've served what you said you were gonna serve. You're in the military in any way, you killed in action. Nobody who's got a DD two fourteen or a discharge out of the guards is gonna be. Discriminated against, everybody gets to be in there, because it's more important that this is Humboldt. Than it is that, oh, you're from the guard kind of thing, you know.
Well, Dave, we've talked when we were up with Union, some of those domes up there, the. When we were putting flags up, you can only read.
Yeah.
Are those some of the names that you were talking about that would be, will, way, way, way back?
Yeah, civil.
Some of the dates on them are amazing that.
Yeah.
And I guess those families probably wouldn't have a chance, but would we be able to figure out a way if someone wanted to put. Some of those people by a stone for them?
We're, we have figured out that it's, it's, when we get done with this whole thing, we think the. Cost per stone's gonna be about a hundred and forty dollars. The problem is, is if you come in and donate and you say I'm buying a stone, it's not tax deductible. So we'd rather have donation, let's make it tax deductible, I, I just went through that with a person, gave a thousand dollars. And they wanted to buy stones for their whole family, so they had this whole list of names. I went back and talked to them and said, no, you, you, you just wanna donate. We'll take care of the stones, give me the names, we're more than happy to include people that are in there. Well, he got a tax deduction on it, which is the way we ought to do it, I think, you know. So we're trying that, it, it's really coming along good, we get good responses over and over and over.
We have quite a list of names of Civil War veterans too. And World War One. Whether there's family around or not, I don't know, but we do have a, a long list of Civil Wars. Uh, I've got one, uh, eighteen, War of eighteen twelve.
Yeah, yeah, and those should all be in, they're from Humboldt, they should all, there, there must be family around. I walked through the one in Widomar and I saw guys that I had gone to school. Didn't know they were in the service one, I was there. Couple of them are dead unfortunately, and that really tears you up. That's, that's a lot harder, you would think would be, David knows what that's like, more than, more than I do.
So total on this thing you're looking at. Start to finish would be X amount?
Well, without the statues and the entrance being given in, I'm figuring we'll do it for around two hundred thousand dollars. That's all the stones, that's getting Derek Wimpin that's gonna put the stones in, he's got that all figured out. Um, Jason Dodd's got all cement done. Except for the curb cuts, I forgot those. I, I think we can do it for about two hundred thousand dollars. I'm worried about twenty, I, I've realized so long ways from twenty-six thousand, but. That you guys are someplace. And I'm telling you, the more I talk to veterans, they more than can like. Some of them really have some difficult, difficulties, you had some of them can't talk. They can't talk about it at all. And I talked to one young guy and he was in a. In a personnel carrier and it hit a IED and blew the lady's legs off the side of him. So he said it was blood all over the place and he's trying to. You know, they're trying to stop her from bleeding to death and it, it has guardian a lot. So we, we really need to do this, I just hate to see. You know, you, you ask younger people who. I'm gonna forget his name, the, the street down by Hy-Vee. Jerry Hatch, you ask him who Jerry Hatch is, they don't know who it is. I said, who's Jerry Hatch Road named after, they don't. What'd he do, they don't know, I've, so I've talked to his twin brother, but I didn't know he had a twin brother, and his older brother. And I've talked to both of those and I explained what we were doing, they telephoned me the information right now. They, they're, people are, once they understand what we're doing, but we have a bigger problem with, with people coming out. And saying, oh, I didn't know you were doing this, oh, I didn't know you were doing something like that. So that's kind of why we're here, we, we, we need the exposure, you know, either.
We've done some advertising in the paper, but people are still saying we don't know.
Yeah, we haven't heard about this, we didn't know you were doing this.
When we did the Dodge statue down Park. Once we got the initial amount that we could order the statue.
Yeah.
People were still sending. Money.
Yeah.
Cause they wanted to have their name on.
Right.
So it was kind of a unique deal that. It still kept. And they were getting it from all over the country.
We've had. Quite a few thousand dollar donations and what I thought is because it costs so little to, to engrave these or to sandblast these. Is to go in the walkway. And pull the walkway stones out. And have them sandblasting on who donated what. Or. You know, you designate ten thousand dollars of the diamond and seventy-five hundred and designate and then, and have these names sandblasted in there. And then put them back in the walkway, you're not putting them in with the veterans. And they stand out. It'll really stand out for them. We've got the front. Uh, the front of this entrance sign, if you've ever been to Fort Dodges, it's. Will look somewhat right there, so you put the military in the front. So. We're just asking if there's any help you could give us. Get us a little further along. We're hoping for this grant money to come in. I think that, that will help, they've been very receptive so far, so.
And you did apply for the Humboldt?
Yes. Yeah, that's it, I asked for all twenty-five thousand. So we're, we're really hopeful, we're really hopeful, we've got eight of us on the board that have been working on this and. Just try and. Trying to come up with ideas. We sent letters out to some industries.
Mid-America is the only. Company that's giving us a grant, which is.
Eleven thousand dollars.
Who's all on your board?
Um. Us two, Ron Rasmussen. Paul Yost. Um, sure you're gonna.
Uh, David Chell, nobody else probably knows him, um. Vicky, uh.
Her dad and her brother were in. And there is a young man from Thor.
Oh, uh.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm turning my names, getting older. Isn't that scary? That, that will scare you to death. Along is his last name. He's a nephew of Daryl Long.
Franklin.
Franklin.
That, that is his son.
It is the son?
Yeah.
We've got several little, there's a couple other ones that'll come on and they went off a while and they, they're back on again. They wanna see this done.
Well, I think it looks like a neat project and I, I think that. You drive around, I go up to boat and you see the one on the corner there. South into their main street, I think it's an awesome. Display and I think it's a shame that. We don't have something in Humboldt and I. Look forward to this thing moving forward and I guess I would. Hope that we can find some.
Yeah.
Some kind of.
So is there a certain dollar amount that you, you would like to?
Um.
Just under.
You know, I didn't even think about it.
Yeah, I know, I know.
I don't, I don't know what your situation is, I don't know, so I.
Okay, I just didn't know there was some, you know, expectation from you guys.
Well, I don't know, there's, there's no real. Fat amount because we don't know what. You guys.
Yeah.
Give.
I don't wanna take the. The VA or the VA office money away from Dean. Let's stop short of taking that and throwing them, throwing him out. No, you guys know, you, you're, you know more about this, I think this is gonna bring. This will bring some people into town, I think. Where it's at. Is more than striking to me. It's, you can't.
Yeah.
Bones is just off Livermore's, just kind of behind the elevator, nice, but just kind of behind the elevator. Redwood, I didn't know it was there until I just really went and searched it out, it's really nice. It is really good, they spent some time on that.
Do I need, in Finland, is it? Where are you from?
Well, well, I'm from Finland, but Widomar is where this coffee cat is. Fenton has a. American Legion office that they keep, I can't believe they keep it open.
I don't see no place for putting my Sherman tank.
That's right, it says, well, you see where the flag points? It's right in there.
The full tank?
Well, we can take pieces off of it.
I think that the Parks Department.
I'll take the guns.
Approve that first of all.
Yeah, yeah, we're being, we're being very. Trying to be very respectful of the city and the Parks Department. Don't make them mad.
Well, there's something else that you definitely paint, Dave.
Clayton Borland volunteered. Earthwork.
Probably insurance and I think too.
I got a temper thing.
That's, that's the one.
Oh, that's the one.
Yeah. You want the guns off.
I'm gonna have kids that are at the park over there crawling on it and. I know, I, I commend you guys, I think it's a worthwhile project.
It's very, very attractive. We, we had one person. Who wanted to add on a building off, a small building off to the side, so that if somebody wanted to do something in the park, they'd have a. Kind of a home location there. I thought, oh, that's nice, that's down the road.
That takes it away from it.
Yep, and the flags, I think putting the flags around is gonna be great.
Yes, for that.
I do too.
I think that's our, and.
Service days.
Clayton went around and looked at all parks and every place and came back and said that's where it should be. And I've sat at that restaurant and looked and, you know, that's actually. We'll probably have to put cameras on, we'll probably have to do some kind of lighting.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. I, I think that's really necessary. I've been wondering how we're gonna lay stones in there with people's names on it and. Keep them there. You know, everybody wants my stone. I turn that over to you guys, I, I just, I appreciate being able to tell the story. You know, the story is. You go out and talk to a young vet and get them to tell you what they did in the service and they, ninety-nine percent of the time, they won't do it.
Even the older vets, some don't, don't want it, I mean, they don't care.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, does Dave Lee tell his story anymore?
Not very often.
Not really, do you? No, it's, it's something better unsaid, I think, it's most of it.
Well, we appreciate.
Anybody?
Yep.
Thank you. I didn't wanna bring in pages and pages like we've shaped to the city, we didn't need that. That, that is unnecessary.
Thank you very much.
Well, thank you. Thank you.
Any of them applications we can?
I've got a bunch of them on the pickup.
We have to. We put them in the office if someone's looking for them, bring, bring somebody and Trish can put them in, she got a. Place in there where they put booklets and.
Yeah, the verification has been our biggest, one of our biggest issues, people don't wanna give their two fourteen. I wouldn't give mine up either. Last time I got done, I crossed off all stuff I didn't want anybody to know, we don't need their social security number.
No.
What we're gonna put on here is. What their full name is and. What service they were in and what action they were in and what years they were in. I was amazed when I hit two hundred and. What was it, two hundred and sixty some years for that few people? And that's out of Humboldt County. You know? And if, if, if you've never heard Jerry Hatch's story, you need to hear it. You need to hear it, you need to search it out and find out his story. Cause it shocked me.
Yeah, nobody knew he was wounded, what, three times?
Three times, the third time he got wounded, he was a hand grenade only. He got to come home. Three Purple Hearts, you get to come home, but he was dead. The first one, he's graduated from Humboldt. Went in the service, went to Nam. First hand grenade, this is what his older brother told me, the first hand grenade came out of a sewer pipe. Vietnamese throw a hand grenade out. He picked it up, twenty, twenty-five years, twenty, twenty-one years old, threw it back in, stepped on it. It blew up. Had shrapnel from, or they pulled the shrapnel out, he went back out, got hit again. Got another Purple Heart, the third one killed him. But people, nobody knows that story and I'm thinking that's you. This is one of our kids. I didn't know the story.
So there was two, uh, Vietnam vets that were killed, then, um.
He was killed, I was a little kid when that.
He never even, uh.
Get there.
Yeah, he was coming down in a helicopter.
He had, yeah, didn't never, never touch ground before he hit.
Yeah.
Yeah, I got, heard that story too. It's, it's what these kids have given up for us.
And for World War Two, there was what, twenties? Forty, forty-two or something like that? That were killed in World War Two.
Humboldt County. Uh, Historical Society has. Uh, books down by action. Of who was there and who died. So. We're gonna go down and take copies of that when we. You know, gotta get one a little more. They're very willing to help to, to us.
Well, it should be a resting project, thank you.
Thank you, you'll be able to watch it.
Yep, thank you.
We got anything else for?
I.
Appreciate it. Well, I guess we're.
Yep, budget workshop. Did you have anything else for Steve?
Well. I'm a little bit on budget. Uh, the budget for the Viet, so veterans, uh. Basically will be a, a mere copy of last year. The only areas that. Seem to really fluctuate is Mid-America and utilities and rent. Now the rent, believe it or not, has been pretty consistent, they've been about four veterans mostly here. So that is far beyond, far below. What we had budgeted the year before. So that I'd like to leave. Where it was. Uh, twenty-five thousand. And, uh. Don't, the only one I wanna raise a little bit would be the utilities, we were at. Fifty-seven hundred last year. And raise up to seven thousand, that one's close to being. Uh, maxed out. We had raised, uh, Mid-America last year. Because we were really thinking of the inflation. Um, we haven't really had that many veterans this year that have, uh, used Mid, Mid-America. So that, uh. That budget from last year. Can we let it? Remain in place, um. The other thing that we have to re, keep in mind is that the state of Iowa gives us ten thousand dollars. To put towards our budget every year. And, um. The three, the three big ones in the past have been educational. And we've reduced that quite a bit of. Down now from twenty-five hundred a year to five hundred a year. Simply by. Instead of going to the, the national conventions. Were watching them on, uh.
On Zoom?
On Zoom. And. There's quite a bit of money to save from that point. Um. Yeah, there's a big one, advertisement and publications, I do quite a bit of advertising in this, in the paper and in the, uh. Uh, what's that one called? The reminder. And, um. That one we had. Budgeted for, uh. Sixty-five hundred, I, I'd like to leave that. And then the, the transportation. To take veterans to either to Des Moines Hospital or the clinic. Has been, uh. Running a thousand, twelve hundred dollars a year. It's hard to say what will happen in the next twelve months of that, uh, it might be a, a very. Weak year where nobody has to go or it could be a strong year, so. Um.
Do you have a copy of your budget?
Yeah. There, everybody wanna copy? I give you.
But I give you. Just to see about a webpage on our. I didn't know. The veterans had a. But on our webpage, you know?
We could put that memorial.
I think so.
And have a donation button. Bet Chris could set something for that.
Good. Please get them to where the. Information.
Yeah, get it to the people that come through.
So for the, for the most part, our budget will remain about a hundred, hundred and one thousand. Uh, for the VA.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Dean.
Yeah, thank you, Dean.
We got a meeting this week, your next, next.
You wanna recess for a little brief moment?